Good evening, welcome to the Northampton City Council Meeting, June 19th, 2014. I'm Council President Bill Dwight W., presiding. As per our usual custom, we start before we convene officially. We open up the podium and the microphone for the public to speak on any topic that suits them, as long as it's thoughtful and considerate. And we ask that you keep your comments under three minutes. And when you step up, please say your name and your address, too, please. And we have a sign-up sheet, but that doesn't necessarily bump you off if you haven't been signed up on the sign-up sheet, but these are the first folks who did sign up. And first up will be Patty Shaughnessy.
Good evening. I'm going to address my first item as the AVA coordinator for the city of Northampton, and that would be for a positive vote on the handicapped parking up in Florence, which would be in front of Bird's on Maple Street. And that parking space has been requested by a number of seniors, as well as persons with disabilities. And so it has gone through the Commission on Disability as a need, and so I would highly encourage you to vote in favor of that parking space in Florence. Now, as the Council on Aging Director, I encourage you to make the appointments for John Kuzinski, Michael Hearn, and Catherine Pecala's service to our board. They've served well, and we would love to see them reappointed. And then also, a new appointment is Diana Solor, and she would be a welcomed addition to our board as well. And with all of the reappointments and appointments, we will be back to having a full board again. The other thing I would just like to mention is Mary Smith, who was one of our longtime board members, passed away on Tuesday. So Mary was a very active board member, as well as a very active volunteer in the Senior Center. And Mary started off volunteering when we were over here at Memorial Hall, so Mary will be dearly missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Tori, Tori Eklund, you're next.
I'm Tori Eklund, and I'm the Chair of the Northampton Commission on Disabilities. An ordinance has been placed, which will be coming forth tonight, sponsored by City Councilor Mary Ann LaBarge and the Northampton Commission on Disability, to place a handicapped parking space on Maple Street in Florence in front of Bird's Market. I am asking for full support on the first vote being placed in front of City Council tonight. Several individuals with disabilities, and some who are elderly, have asked for this, and the Commission on Disability feels it would be very beneficial to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tori. Paul Waterman, please.
Good evening. My name is Paul Waterman, and I live at 16 Fairview Avenue in this great city of ours. I've been around a long time, but I'm here to tell you a saga of woe. You know, in all of our personal lives, we have things happen to us that we can foresee, and sometimes we don't foresee them. About two, maybe two months ago, I was laid off from my job, but I saw it coming. And because I saw it coming, I was able to plan ahead. I was able to take my finances and figure out what we could spend money on, do what we had to save, what we couldn't spend money on. But the point is, is that I had to plan ahead, because I knew that my income stream was going to be limited during the time that I was laid off. And the thing that I feared most, believe it or not, was being able to pay my taxes. You know, I was afraid that I wouldn't pay the real estate tax, or the CPA, or the new stormwater tax, or the excise tax, or my water and sewer fees. But again, because I planned, I think I'll be all right this time. But I often wondered, what would happen if I took the tack that some of you did back in, I think, October, November, where the fire department came in with the mayor and expressed proudly, kind of at the time, that they had reached a resolution. Some of you pleaded with your hearts that, because the city budget couldn't afford it, you just couldn't pass the contract. And I know there are issues behind the walls that happened, and I know there are things that, you know, don't need to be said in public, but some of you were very, very concerned about the fire department, and really expressed a heartfelt desire to be able to pass and fund the contract, but you just couldn't do it. So I kind of wondered to myself, what would happen if I called the tax collector's office and said, now that I'm laid off, I'm sorry, I just can't pay my taxes. I can't afford it. What would happen, do you think? That's a rhetorical question. Let's think about that for a minute. So fortunately, again, because I planned ahead, I can probably, I only have 56 seconds?
That's almost a minute.
Right. So let me get to the point, Billy. Last, the last meeting, one of the councilors sitting here described the comfortable budget situation that you have, and that in three years or so, you're going to have to pass another override. To me, that's very poor leadership. As I just described in my own personal situation, knowing that something was going to happen to my cash flow, I had to plan for it. I think if you know that there's going to be another override in another three years, or X number of years, you better start planning now, because that's what you need to do as leaders. And if you're not willing to do that, then you deserve to sit in the seats that you're sitting in. I will not, I supported every override, for the schools, for the fire department, everything that the city wanted, I supported. I will not support another override if I don't see any activity now trying to postpone or eliminate the danger of an override in another three years. It's your obligation to the citizens of Northampton, if you think that you're going to run out of money, you're not going to have enough money, or you're going to have an interruption of your cash stream, to start planning now. So, and I'll be glad to help during that planning process. Don't disappoint us, okay? Don't disappoint us in three years, and just simply sit back with the comfortableness that you have in your chairs right now, and not do anything about it, so that the citizens of Northampton can get behind an override if they're convinced that they really need it. But don't be poor and not do anything about it. That's all I have to say. It was great to see you guys. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Jasper Lapinski. This is not a public comment about recycling, but my notes are written on the back of an agenda from last council. Before I make my own comments, I want to speak on behalf of a couple of different friends of mine, who both within the last week have remarked to me that the crosswalk time on Main Street and Pleasant Street, the main intersection, is not enough for some elderly people to get all the way across, and then they're stuck in the middle of traffic. I don't know why they were telling me that, but I told them I'd say, I'd tell you. My public comment has to do with money and the budget, and I am the exact opposite of a budget geek. I usually have nothing to say. Generally speaking, the numbers are boring to me. But I thought about it, right? $100 million, sounds like a lot of money. Obviously, a little bit more would make things easier. Kids could stay awake in school, and so on. But then I thought about another number, which is a little bit higher. The $600 billion that we're going to spend on the military this year. President Obama and Congress are going to approve it, if they haven't already. You break that down, so you do a subtraction problem, the 318 million people in the U.S., then you do a multiplication problem, the number of people in Northampton, and you get about 50, let's see, $53.8 million a year, and that's not counting veterans' benefits, interest on the debt, all these things that we spend. Think about if we had $53.8 million a year more for Northampton, and we weren't going to war with Iraq again. We could send kids to school whenever they wanted to. We could pay the Northampton pedal cabs to take them all there. Or better yet, we could build, with $53 million a year, we could build a high-speed rail line to Washington, D.C., buy everyone in town a ticket, go down there and protest the war in Iraq. The point being, not only do I support previous and future rhetorical measures that have been criticized, the council has an interest in national policy, because far more consequential than Prop 2 and 1/2, this is robbing us of our cash flow, and it's causing the overrides. So no war in Iraq, yes, schools and teachers and firefighters. I'm a broken record, but there are your numbers.
Thank you very much. David Newton, please.
My name is David Newton, and I live at 211 North Street in the Twin Cleaners Building. I live on the corner, fairly close to the corner of Lincoln and North, which is part of why I have kind of a well-honed research history on the dynamic of the 18-wheeler issue throughout our whole ward, but in particular, more concentratedly in the Lincoln Avenue sector, with other side streets involved. I'm here to support the amendment to the proposition, wholeheartedly, and it's a great idea that we bring this back to the surface again, because I don't know the history of it. I'm sure a lot of you who have been in town for a long time have, know what the previous discussions have been that relate to this in the past, and how the signage that now exists came to be, and the suggestion, the new signage is an extension of that thinking, and it's a great idea. I would only add to that, that the redesigning and the coordination between the city and the RDW and the Mass Highway Department in the design of the new Exit 19 is working right along, and I would implore the interested parties, at the council member, and at the mayor's office, and at the coke plant, and in Ward 3, to get, enter into a kind of a collaborative discussion about how to go beyond the signage to help the drivers get out of their predicament that they find themselves in on Bridge Street once they've made that left-hand turn off the ramp. My suggestion is that the key to the problem, or the key to the solution of the problem, lies in how you design the rampway, not only with signage, but with whatever methods help the drivers go where they need to go, which is basically on to, help me with the name of the street.
Dusser.
Straightaway, what? Damon Road, thank you. They need to go to Damon Road and not turn left. Once they turn left, the problem looms large in front of them and in front of us. So once they've turned, the signage is kind of a stopgap measure and will help possibly, although you may end up with a syndrome of more trucks down at the very center of the city at the railroad overpass, because they've obeyed all the signage on the way. So I just mentioned that as something to think about, as an extension of the thinking beyond the signage that we're hopefully going to be able to get, that will, will help. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. That's all we have signed up, but anyone's welcome to speak who would like to speak. Bernadette, do you want to speak?
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, familiar faces, that these people that you are, that do this incredible service. Wow, I just have to bow to you with some of my time. I'm here tonight-
Bernadette, can you state your name and address for the records?
Oh, sure. Sorry, I don't do this very often.
Not everyone knows you, but yet-
Bernadette Giblin, 110 Williams Street, Northampton, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm here tonight to talk to you about something on the docket for the spraying of phragmatis over at Fitzgerald Lake. I've had the ability to see the great work of this Broadbrook Group. They're an amazing organization. They're conservationists, just like myself. I know they're requesting, like they have done many, many sprays, the money to spray for invasive species removal. It's actually phragmatis, they look like cattails, they've got non-native ones, and they want more native ones. I really want to speak to you tonight, because as many of you know, I am an organic lankier professional. I actually help communities and property owners do things naturally, without the use of pesticides and herbicides, which are incredibly hazardous to our health and the water supply. I'd like you all to think about the fact that this is Roundup that will be sprayed. That's what rodeo is. It's called glyphosate, and this particular spray application will include a surfactant, which makes the product more mobile in the water. It's a lot of dense material that's taken, I'm trying to synthesize it quickly. But basically, there are innovative approaches that are being used, where they're actually using biological controls in the Great Lakes. And a lot of why they're doing this is because they can see it's costing communities way too much money, and it's not sustainable. I know this gentleman says he has a record of success in this region. He's sprayed three times. Why is he spraying a fourth? I'd like to hear some real hard data. How many numbers of plants is he reducing? Are they really looking at, is it migrating in the water? I know these folks do do water supplies, but I will tell you, in the U.S. right now, USGS does not even test for glyphosate. The fact that the spray application he's recommending will have a surfactant is of concern to me. Mostly, rodeo is used in these places, because surfactants are so dangerous. I know we're all thinking about water in a new way, and I want folks to know that, you know, obviously, Conservation Commission has done great work to seek out this gentleman, who they feel is a very responsible ecologically-minded contractor. But a lot is changing in this arena every day, because we live in the world of climate change, where these plants are magnifying, and more of this old spray approach is really not very forward-thinking when we think about what it's doing to our water. Most of the research that is done, I will remind you, is done by manufacturers. In Denmark, they banned this project, product, a decade ago, because their research actually showed stuff was moving 10 times greater than what the manufacturer had reported. So when we hear from one businessperson, it's safe. I'd encourage you all to vote no. You have a window of time until October to do this application, and explore these other resources first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does, would anyone else like to speak? We want, we want to. Okay, I'll ask the Secretary to call a moment, please.
Counselor Evans.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Present.
Excuse me. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
Counselor Carroll.
Here.
Counselor Spector.
Here.
Yeah, I should repeat that Counselor Klein is absent with an excuse. We have no presentations scheduled, nor publications. The mayor is here, are the communications from the mayor? No communications from the mayor. One-minute announcements. Now, I would like to remind folks that Counselor Paul Spector had announced that he would have an announcement.
My announcement, I have no announcements this evening.
I, the councilors are fusing the privilege. Are there any other ones?
I'll try and think of one.
Wow, okay. I'm almost ready for a German. No licenses and conditions, so we come up to approval of minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve-
Seconded from the last meeting, and seconded.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Now, we also have up next the reports of committees and appointments and elections. The meeting minutes from Rules, Orders, Appointments and Ordinances meeting of May 12th, the minutes from Social Service Veterans Culture and Recreation of April 23rd, and the minutes from the Committee on Economic and Community Development Housing and Land Use of April 1st, and the meeting minutes from the Committee on Public Safety of May 5th, 2014. Would you like to move them as a group, or would you like to work with them?
Move them as a group.
Motion's made to move them as a group, seconded. Any discussion on these minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Holy cats. I suspect we're having some post-traumatic stress response from the last meeting, which went nearly forever. It just adjourned, it feels like 20 minutes ago, so. Up next, this is a new appointment for the Housing Partnership, Peter Frothingham, the term from May 12th, 2012, and to May 2015. It's filling the unexpired term of Patty McGill. This comes with a positive recommendation from Rules, Orders, Appointments and Ordinances. Is there a motion?
There's a motion to approve. Second.
This candidate's been moved and approved and seconded. Any discussion on the candidate? Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, I think a lot of people know Peter, and he has done so much for the city of Northampton. He has, if you look at his record on his application, he has been involved in many, many committees, and I am very happy to see that he is going on Housing Partnership.
He's an accomplished architect, and also very committed and devoted to the communities. All right, all those in favor of Peter Frothingham fulfilling the unexpired term of Patty McGill, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next up is a new appointment for the City Treasurer, Chris Bissell, Christine Bissell, I'm sorry, of 92 Bissell Road, Goshen, Mass. This also comes, this is to rise up the status of City Treasurer, a vacated office, and it comes with a positive recommendation from Rules, Orders, Appointments and Ordinances on June 16th. I would move we endorse the appointment.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on Chris's credentials? Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, I did not know her at all until I met her in ordinance, and it's amazing, because I mean, how many times do we go into the treasurer's office? And I had the right to talk with her, because not knowing her, and not knowing her workability and so forth, I had some concerns about how many people were interviewed, and that was important to me. And hearing from our financial director, who was on the interviewing process, I thank Susan for settling what I needed to know, so I will support this.
Any other discussion? I know Chris is my former bank teller, years and years and years ago, at the Savings Bank, and thought highly of her then, think even more highly of her now, and so I too, I think she's an excellent choice. Any further discussion on the candidate? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next up is, you heard referred to in the public comment, is a new appointment to the Council on Aging, Diana Solor of 241 Jackson Street. The term starting April 2014, expiring April 2017. Also with a positive recommendation from Rules, Orders, Appointments and Ordinances on June 16th.
Move to appoint. Second.
Motion's made and seconded to advance the candidate. Any discussion?
Yes, I met Diana through Casa Latina. She was highly recommended by Anita Garcia, which I think, Council President, you know Anita. I think she is going to be a great asset for the Senior Center of bringing in more elderly seniors of Latino families, and she's just very, very motivated, and I am really happy about this appointment.
Any other discussion on the candidate? All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And then we come to, also referred to in the public comment, reappointments to the Council on Aging for Mike Hearn Jr., 24th Street, term starting April 2014, expiring April 2017. John Kazenski Jr., 39 Lino Terrace, the term, I'm assuming also April 2014 to April 2017. And Catherine Pecala Service, 9 Butler Place, the term, once again, also running April 2014 to April 2017.
I'll move these appointments as a group.
Second.
Motion's made to move them as a group and seconded. Any discussion on these candidates? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? And I forgot to mention that they also came with positive recommendations from ordinance. Now comes this magical moment where we change from a city council meeting to a finance committee meeting, and I, we're going to recess, I'm passing the gavel figuratively to Counselor Murphy, who chimes that comment. Where is the gavel? I don't know, someone made off with it. Well, then it is figurative. Comes up in public safety, someone's made off with it. While Bill's looking for the gavel, Mary, or Pam, you want to call the role of finance?
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Evans.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
So to start off with, we have a couple of more financial transfers as we wind down fiscal '14. The first is order that $316,700 be appropriated from the FY14 general fund, undesignated fund balance to the following accounts. $66,700, legal services, OM. $125,000 to the capital stabilization fund, and $125,000 to the stabilization fund. Do we have a motion on this, and then we'll hear from the mayor?
Second.
Good evening, city councilors. This is, again, as is customary, we're getting now to the very end of the fiscal year, and so as you may recall, the, our undesignated fund balance essentially disappears after June 30th, until all of the "undesignated funds," or free cash, as it's referred to, for the FY14 budget are accounted for by the DOR, and then that's released to us usually in November and December. So it's been our practice, well, to make some transfers at the very end of the year of our remaining, of parts of our remaining free cash balance. The first is a final transfer to the legal budget. This is, we think, will cover all of the remaining bills that we still have coming due for the month of June for legal services. And then the second two are to place $125,000 in our capital stabilization fund, and $125,000 into our stabilization fund. Again, to move that free cash into those stabilization funds, as part of our overall strategy to increase those funds, and as I've said in past years, those funds don't go away after June 30th, those stabilization funds remain. And so, so that's the purpose of the order, and we would request two readings, because you can't take a second reading after June 30th, because, again, free cash closes by June 30th. So this is our final opportunity to move any remaining free cash around within the budget.
And adding money to the stabilization funds makes our bond rating people very happy, does it not?
Yes, again, we've been talking a lot, and we talk about it in the budget, there's lots of, in the budget itself, we've talked about how we've worked really hard to hit some of those targets in terms of where our stabilization is, and our capital stabilization is as a percentage of our budget. So again, this just helps us get closer to that goal.
Any questions for the mayor? Or any questions at all? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of positive recommendation?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have another budgetary transfer. Order that the following FY 2014 budgetary transfers be and are hereby made. In the city clerk's office, moving $677 from election workers to permanent salaries. In central service, moving $16,000 from permanent salaries to repairs and maintenance. In building inspector's office, moving $3,500 from personal salaries, or permanent salaries, to office equipment. In parking maintenance, move 500 from the electrical budget to permanent salaries. In workers' compensation, move $8,800, workers' compensation, over to police, fire, and accident. Medical insurance, we're going to take $28,000 from there and move it to other employee benefits Medicare. And workers' compensation, we're going to move $45 from workers' compensation over to the telephone account.
to the telephone account. All of those total $57,522. Mayor is going to address this one, too?
Again, these are all, this is all funds that are part of the budget, and we're just doing some final movement in various accounts. Some of you may have noticed the work that's being done on the steps of City Hall. That's actually the funding that you see that's being, some excess salaries funding is being moved over to O&M because we're trying to address some safety issues on the front steps and the stoop of City Hall. So, that's a project that we're trying to do. We actually had attempted to try to use, we were hoping to try to use some of our CPA money that we had been awarded for the, all the exterior projects that are happening, but we're told that we would need to resubmit a new application. So, we've just decided, while we've got the contractor here, we want to just get that work done. So, that's why we're doing the work. And the other ones are just, again, truing up accounts in order to cover what's needed in those accounts.
Any questions for the mayor on this one? Any discussion? Then, all in favor of a positive recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. The next financial order is upon the recommendation of the mayor. Order that the Northampton City Council gratefully accepts a donation of $1,700, a gift to the city of Northampton towards the installation of a rainbow crosswalk on Main Street for the Northampton Pride Parade. And in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, approves the use of the gifted funds to reimburse the DPW Street Paving and Marking Supplies Budget. Do we have a motion on this one?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this? I think we're all familiar. Anybody have a question for the mayor on this one? I think we know what this one's all about. Hearing no discussion. All in favor of a positive recommendation on the gift?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Thank you. And the last one is upon the recommendation of the mayor. Order that the sum of $81,650 be and hereby is appropriated to the Emergency Demolition Account from the FY14 General Fund Free Cash for the demolition of a condemned structure located at 171 King Street in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 143, Subsection 6 through 9, inclusive in the Massachusetts State Building Code, CMR 780, Section 116.1, and pursuant to the recovery provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 139, Subsection 3A, as such provisions are incorporated into Mass. General Law, 143, Subsection 9. And this one, I'm sure the mayor does want to talk about.
Yes. And actually, I've asked our building commissioner, Mr. Hasbrook, to be here, and deputy fire chief, John Daven, is here as well, from the Northampton Fire Department, who can talk about this. This is an example where we do sometimes have to utilize Mass. General Law in order to have funding necessary if we need to ourselves demolish a building. But I want to have the building commissioner really explain the process and the fact that the city, and emphasize the fact that the city ultimately does get reimbursed for this funding, if in fact, we have to take that step. So, I would ask for you to recognize Mr. Hasbrook and deputy fire chief Daven.
Make a motion to recognize.
Second.
Hasbro.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. I'm Louis Hasbrook, the building commissioner for the city of Northampton. I'm here to request the funding to demolish the building at 171 King Street. It's the former Honda dealer, presently owned by Don Leah. And we've been asking, we've been asking Mr. Leah to secure the building for a considerable length of time. In March of this year, there was a fire in the building. And then again, in May of this year, the police found another trespasser in the building. Building is not in good condition. We've surveyed the building. We've come to the determination that, given the condition of the building and seemingly the determination of people to get into the building, it can't be secured, and it needs to be demolished. I issued an order to have it demolished on June 6th in accordance with Mass. General Law, 143, Section 6. And the owner has not complied with the order. So, we're requesting the funding if the owner does not comply with the order, that the city be allowed to go forward. And we need that funding. I've handed out around some of the letters that we've sent, a survey of the building, which details the conditions and the supporting legislation. The city is able to place a lien on the property and to recoup the money either as taxes or to ultimately could force a sale of the building. The property, I mean, of the property. The property is quite valuable, and I see this lien as being a very small portion of its value. And I have no reason to think that we wouldn't be able to recoup this money.
Please, counsel.
So, my question is, these funds are only needed if the owner does not respond to your order.
If the owner refuses to respond.
Counsel.
And if we have to tear it down, the owner has to pay it back with interest, 6%, right?
Right. We would be, we would, plus legal fees, collection fees, it's not a simple, we'll do it, and then you can pay us back.
Counsel.
Are there fines associated with, also with noncompliance? Are they liable to any fines?
We would have the opportunity to fine the individual if, and there'll be discussions, I believe, at the point where we are poised to move forward. The statute does allow a $100 a day fine for noncompliance.
Counsel LeBarge.
I'm sorry. Just some follow-up also on, as the issue of safety, I mean, there was a fire that was started there, and it was addressed by the Northampton Fire Department. Clearly, the only source of that fire could have been someone inside the building igniting that fire because there's no functioning services in there. There's nothing to spontaneously combust. So, consequently, that puts our fire department and our emergency response services at risk because they don't know if someone's in that building. They have to act and approach that building as if there are people in there. And the fact that the building's not, has not been secured, it is, it is, this isn't an issue about an eyesore. We don't deal with eyesores this way. This is an actual, by your determination and the fire department's determination, this is an actual safety hazard to Northampton personnel and citizens.
That's correct. And I'll let Deputy Chief Daven speak to that.
Yes, you, Gavin, you're welcome to speak to that issue.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Honestly, the first thing I think about whenever we have an incident down there is, back to December 1999, the city of Worcester lost six firefighters in a Worcester Cold Storage Warehouse building. It was an abandoned building. They had reports of homeless people in there. You know, they went in, did what they had to do, but they lost six firefighters. And, you know, granted, it's a lot smaller scale. I understand that. But I don't want to be in a position to have to send firefighters in there. Their job's dangerous enough. You know, it's an abandoned building. There's holes in it. We can't secure it. They tried. They just can't properly secure it. You know, there's people in and out of there. And, you know, as you said, if the fire starts in there, you know, there's no power to the building. Obviously, you know, there's probably somebody in there, and we're going to have to make an effort to search that building at some point. So, you know, and I can just, all I can speak to is the danger for our personnel. And, you know, I just, I don't want to be in that position. So, I would ask that we just tear it down and be done with it.
Counsel LeBarge.
Louis, I think I heard you say something to the effect that you've been dealing with the owner for about six years on the building?
We've been, the building's been empty since 2005, and we've been, there've been incidents right along. We've asked that the building be secured. The building is secured. The people who are attempting to gain entry will pull the plywood down. I think one time, a whole load of, a whole, a large number of sheets of plywood were taken.
So many people have been complaining about that site for several years. And hearing what Deputy Chief Devine has to say about the fires and about people's lives, I can't understand how they're getting in there. Are they, how are they getting into that?
There's holes all over it.
Most recently, they've climbed up onto their back roof and come across the roof and kicked in the second floor windows. My big fear is that that second, the roof, the lower portion of the roof is rotted, and even if it were just an adventurous teenager, if they fell through, it's quite a ways down, and they could be hurt.
Now, you mentioned something about June 6th with the owner.
I issued the order to make safe, and it was an order to actually demolish the building because we couldn't assume that it could be made safe on June 6th.
And what did the owner say?
The owner has, I've had numerous conversations with the owner, and they're attempting to locate a demolition contractor at a price that seems acceptable to them. And I think that, at this point, the city is, the city has an obligation. I hope that the city will approve this funding because I, as the building official, have an obligation to make sure that this building is safe. And the only way it could be done is if it were demolished.
I have to agree with you. It's a safety issue. It's a sore sight. I think you've worked very closely with the owner, and I will support this amount of money.
Counsel Kearney.
I agree that the, that there's a safety hazard there, and that this building does need to be raised, and we'll approve the funding. I have a slightly, but certainly related question, just because it's the same property, and maybe it's better for the mayor. But we use that property presently to store all of the snow, excess snow in the city. Is this, is there the arrangement that we have, is that an arrangement with the same owner and the same?
We have had an arrangement. We've had to modify it over time. And I want to be clear, too, that, you know, we, my administration has been trying to work with the owner of this property. I've had an opportunity to meet with their representatives, actually, after the fire. Terry Masterson has been working with them very diligently and trying to work through some issues with EEP on the property to try to get, to try to help get this site redeveloped. I think there's a, I think everyone in Northampton has been concerned about the look of the property. What I'm concerned about is there's a vacant valuable commercial parcel that's sitting there that should be put into service. So, we've been working hard to do that. So, my hope is that, that in spite of this demolition, we'll still be able to have, have a relationship. But frankly, the city has been looking for a new snow dump anyway because we can't rely on this forever as a snow dump. But we, you know, we've, I believe we're in good stead in terms of that going forward, but we'll have to see how it goes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I know, I've, I'm hopeful that, I'm happy to vote to make this money available to you to have that option, but I'm hopeful that they do the right thing and take the building down. I know I've, I've talked to them at Welle at times, and they've spoken very positively about their reputation with the city of Northampton. I know they've let fire use that to stage and practice. They let us put the snow there. They, they really like Northampton, and they've been good to the city. And I think they'll, or I hope they'll rise to the occasion, do the right thing, and take the building down. And certainly, it doesn't hurt if we're in a position to do it and attach their property for that. They know we mean business, but I'm hopeful they'll just, you know, be, be the kind of good corporate citizens they've been to this point and actually take action themselves and take the building down, so.
I hope they do. I want to make it clear that we're not, I'm not requesting the funding because it's an eyesore, or because it would be easier to develop if there weren't a property. Those things have been true for quite a while, but the actual deterioration of the building to the point where it can't be secured is something that's been, happened recently, and that's why we're moving forward at this point.
No, and there clearly, in all the development plans I've ever heard for that site, none of them include that building. Sooner or later, that building's going away. And if it's unsafe to have there, and it's unsafe to our firefighters and to the people who may break into the building on a lark, it really should go away because there's no reuse for it. Counsel.
And I think we should emphasize, it's not a punitive measure. This is not a punitive measure. The point, in fact, is that, as Counsel Murphy points out, the property owners have been good corporate citizens and by and large, have been trying to address this problem. But there is a sense of urgency here, and the charge that you two hold, which is protection of staff and citizens, is of paramount importance, and that's what this is. This is addressing that issue. It is not a punitive attack on any individual or any corporation, so.
Any other questions in finance? Any other discussion? Then, all in favor of a positive recommendation?
Aye.
Do you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, do we want the, these gentlemen to stay for the regular reading?
No.
Or can they be on their way?
We don't need them.
Thank you, gentlemen. And as there's nothing else in finance, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Aye.
I'm out of recess and back in. Really a crisis requires the investigation. Well, here we are. We find ourselves to, a second reading on the proposed budget. And out of sympathy for councilors and for television workers and folks watching at home, I will not completely re-read the, that I did last time, but allow that I, that on each order, I will read the amount of words allocated.
Okay.
Without giving the larger sermon.
So, I would move the FY15 General Fund Budget of $80,645,732.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Well, this has been seconded. I would hope there's some discussion. Is there any discussion? Well, okay. I mean, this is.
Do we need to ask to waive any second reading of this?
Yes.
I mean, to waive the actual reading?
The actual reading?
It took about an hour?
No. Actually, I did that before, more out of a courtesy, and the council's expressed, and the public's expressed a desire to know what it is, the items that we're discussing. And at the last meeting, I did do that, and as you recall, it was very long and involved. And the budget is available on the city website, but sparing everyone the minutia of revolving funds and, and.
I just meant procedurally, so.
Procedurally, there's no requirement necessarily.
To even have read it in the first.
As far as I understand, there's no requirement to, so.
You asked for discussion?
Yeah.
Just comment. So, I'll say the same thing I said last time, which is, in the years I've been on the council, I've been slowly learning about how the budget works. And this time, the way this budget is presented makes it very clear and, and easy, not only for me, who've been looking at this, but I think for other people looking at the budget. I just want to praise the mayor and, and his office for the work done with this because I think it was incredibly clear, and I think that's important when people are looking at this, to be able to understand it.
Counsel Murphy. Well, I'd just like to respond a little to the public comment that was made earlier, and it was a very earnest public comment, and I appreciate the fact that many citizens may feel that way. But unfortunately, you know, the reality of Proposition 2 and 1/2 are 1980s vintage, and the economic realities since then have changed. And there really is no plausible way for take, we, for us to take the money that we have today and have that financial reality last indefinitely. It just can't be done for reasons that people all are comfortable with. I mean, you take health insurance, fuel, and our employees alone, and all of those sources over three years or into the next contract may well grow more than our 2 and 1/2 percent levy growth allows. And we'll all remember dealing with just the fire contract alone, and the fact that we, you know, we love our firefighters, but we couldn't afford to fund that arbitrator's ruling realistically. And those sort of things are going to continue to happen. So, we have to face the fact that at some point in time, our, our financial needs, given those three things alone, are going to outgrow our ability to live within our requirements of Proposition 2 and 1/2. And we're going to have to deal with retirement and retiree healthcare because of the Gadsby changes. It's just, I can understand why taxpayers would earnestly be concerned about our ability to do that, but I just don't see how that's possible. And I want to be respectful and realistic about the fact that sooner or later, those accounts alone are going to require us to have to ask the taxpayers again, how do you want us to address this, and are you going to give us the money to do that? I mean, I, I'm very comfortable. We're a well-run financial city. Our auditors feel that way. Our bond rating companies feel that way. I think we're running a financially responsible city. But that, the economic reality says that we're just not going to be able to live within 2 and 1/2 percent for more than three or four more years, at least in my opinion, and that we're going to have to deal with going back to the citizens and saying, the status quo cannot be maintained. Do you want to pay some more to keep the status quo? Or are you going to ask us to please reduce our services to you to save the money? And, and that's, we're good, next year, we're probably good the year after that. But somewhere down the road, we're going to have to return to deal with that. Just, and if you look at our economic history, it's there. It's just reality, and unfortunate reality sometimes. It, it's just reality and unfortunate reality sometimes messes up our best wishes, but I, I think that it will. And I, I made the comment only because, you know, I, I understand where the gentleman who spoke tonight is coming from. A lot of citizens feel that way, you know, and we're an aging population and more and more people are going on fixed incomes and it's not easy, uh, for them to survive. And maybe our reality will be, we have to respond to that and say, yeah, we're going to have to cut back and not get another override. I think we were very fortunate this time, the citizens rose to the occasion and said we appreciate what services we have and we want to pay for them. But that, that was a very valuable decision they made and I don't think we can count on them making it every time, particularly if our economy doesn't rebound more than it has, so.
Counsel?
I also just want to emphasize, like I said last time as, as well, um, the fiscal stability plan has been extended to 2020, so, um, I don't think there's a lack of long-term planning, um, that, and, and long-term thinking involved. Thank you.
And I would add to that, that, that we were charged, um, by Mr. Waterman to make a plan, in fact. He said he was prepared to support an override provided that we showed a, a good spirited vested interest in, in doing that. The mayor and, and Susan Wright have, when they advocated for the override, expressed a long-term plan that took us into, as Counsel Adams pointed out, and beyond the original three-year projection. And the other issue about overrides and Prop 2 and 1/2, Prop 2 and 1/2, we tend to forget how Prop 2 and 1/2 came about. The whole argument originally presented, and I think it's flawed, but the fact is that the argument that was presented was that they were going to require communities, they knew the communities were never going to meet the conditions set by 2 and 1/2. It didn't even correspond with inflation. They knew that there will always be the pressure point, but it was to force governments to ask the citizens if they're prepared to invest further. Somehow that got translated and turned into some distorted attitude that Proposition 2 and 1/2 is an admission of failure, of economic failure and bad planning. In point in fact, that's simply not true. All communities are pressured into this point or all communities suffer when they don't address that point. And there are a number of communities surrounding here, they used to brag on the fact that they haven't passed any overrides, who are currently closing school systems or laying off teachers and, and they have trouble finding managers for their cities and towns, their communities and towns. So, and, and I think, I take his words to heart. I take Paul Waterman's words to heart and I believe the mayor, the executive is, as well, and I know that this council does, is that, that, and to Counsel Murphy's point, we are actually a very well-managed city and the proof in that is reflected with our audits, with our bond rating, with, with the fact that we've, in particular this time around, are addressing a budget that doesn't include any layoffs, that doesn't include any significant cuts and actually allows the restoration of, of programs that have been missing in the past. And with the anticipation that we'll be able to do that many years, few years, more years beyond this one time. So I'm, I'm more than happy to, to approve this budget and I'm also more than happy to take Mr. Waterman's advice. Any other discussion on this? Um, okay. The, the motion actually is for, this is, uh, is, was moved, which is 80 thou...
Eighty million.
Eighty million, sorry. Eighty thousand, be sweet. Eighty, eighty million, six hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. And I will ask the secretary to call the roll, please.
Yes.
Counsel LeBart?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Next up, we have a series of enterprise funds and I don't know if you want to move them as a group. Yeah, I would like to move item 2 through 5. The, um, the sewer enterprise fund, the water enterprise fund, the solid waste enterprise fund and the stormwater enterprise fund as a group. And those items in that order, and I'll, I haven't heard a second though.
Second.
Second to move them as a group. The, um, the sewer enterprise fund budget of $6,238,120.
Mr. President, sir. Could those be projected?
Unfortunately, the projector is, uh, a funding issue. Now hopefully it needs to have its filter cleaned, is what it's crying. So I'm sorry.
Protesting.
The, uh, water enterprise fund budget of $8,811,826. The solid waste enterprise fund budget of $1,098,261. And the stormwater enterprise fund budget of $1,980,056. And that motion, has been made, any discussion on these items?
To approve.
The, the motions have been made and seconded already. So, um, of course, it's the secretary leaves, won't be able to do the roll. You look for the gavel? Any luck? No further discussion on these items? Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you.
One to one, call one.
Okay. Thank you very much. The call goes out to the public, public response and thank you. Uh, so please call the roll on items 2 through...
Five.
Two through five, I'm sorry. A little update warning popped up on my computer. Yes.
Counsel LeBart?
Yes.
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 It is, they have passed in second reading. The, uh, item number six, Counsel Murphy?
I would move item six, which is establish other post-employment benefits liability trust fund.
Second it.
The motions have been made to, for item number six. Uh, any discussion on it? Please call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we have some revolving funds. You might recall those. I will spare you reading those, but Counsel Murphy, you want to make a motion for...
I would, I would move all of the revolving funds. That would be item seven through 26, but I'll leave it to the council president to describe.
Okay. Uh, we have the energy and sustainability revolving fund of $100,000. The fire department hazmat revolving fund of $65,000. The department of public works construction services revolving fund of $85,000. Cross-connection program revolving fund of $75,000. The council on aging transportation revolving fund of $50,000. The NCOA activities revolving fund of $90,000. The NCOA, and by the way, that's Northampton Council on Aging Gift Shop revolving fund of $20,000. The NCOA food services revolving fund of $50,000. The NCOA senior publications revolving fund of $50,000. The NCOA trips and travel revolving fund of $100,000. The recreation department athletic leagues, league fees revolving fund of $230,000. JFK aquatic family center revolving fund of $120,000. The Northampton School Department Transportation revolving fund of $175,000. Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School Farm revolving fund of $200,000. Tourism directional sign program revolving fund of $20,000. The public health nursing revolving fund of $20,000. James House revolving fund of $75,000. The public health Sharps disposal program revolving fund of $15,000. Uh, the public safety dispatch fire alarm monitoring program revolving fund of $45,000. The DPW reuse committee revolving fund of $5,000. Is it 5,000? Uh, the senior work-off abatement program of $1,000 for qualifying senior. Veterans work-off abatement program for $1,000 for qualifying veteran. And do we need to separate that out? Oh, I'm sorry, those are, I just skipped over into the abatement funds too, unfortunately. And on the senior fund, we have, we have, okay.
Those are, yeah, those are...
Overshot. So we stop at the DPW reuse committee revolving fund.
Twenty-six.
Uh, any discussion on these items? Please call the roll. Uh, the motion was made by Counsel Murphy and I think Counsel LeBart.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Chair?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
The revolving funds have been...
We're going to take 27, 28 as a group.
Um, there is one amendment on 28. There was some language amendment change on that, so I don't know if you want to separate that out.
Let's separate them out.
The, uh, number 27, uh, so we'll deal with this one first. The motions have been made, uh, by Counsel Adams and seconded by Counsel Murphy. This is the senior work-off abatement program of $1,000 per qualifying senior. Any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Counsel Chair?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Counsel LeBart?
Yes.
Yes. On number 28, this is the veterans work-off abatement program for $1,000 for qualifying veteran. I'll send the motion.
So moved.
Seconded. They, there has been a deletion because you recall during the last time, there was a redundant qualification for, uh, veterans over a certain age when veterans qualify period.
Okay.
Right? Correct. So now that is represented as, it's just veterans, so. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Counsel Murphy, you want to move any of the 29 through 34?
Yeah, I'd like to move the capital projects, which are 29 through 34 as a group.
Second.
Correct. Motion to make and second to move them if you move. Okay with that? All right. So, I can get it up here. Uh, the first one is item number 29 and that's the capital projects appropriation, uh, from the FY14 general fund, designated fund balance of free cash of $972,500. Item 30 is capital projects appropriated from the receipts reserved for appropriation parking of $290,855. Number 31 is capital projects appropriated from the receipts reserved for appropriation sale of land account, uh, $319,000. Number 32 is the capital project appropriated from FY2006 capital project for the sidewalk design project reprogrammed for traffic calming projects. And that's $40,000. Uh, number 33 is the appropriation of funds for replacement vehicles for the DPW and that's $360,000. And the final financial order there for capital is authorizing the city treasurer with approval from the mayor to appropriate funds for street resurfacing to the tune of $500,000. Any discussion on these items?
I, I would just, I would, I would just, just praise that many of the capital investments we're making this year, um, not the least of which would be, uh, street resurfacing for half a million dollars, which is urgently needed. So I think that's one of the more exciting parts of this budget. I'm glad we're making these investments.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Item number 35, accept a motion?
Second.
This is for, uh, $316,700 to be appropriated from the FY14 general fund, designated fund balance, AKA free cash to legal services. You discussed this. Capital stabilization and stabilization accounts. And there's a request for two readings. First reading, the motions have been made. Any discussion? No other questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Counsel Inspector?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel LeBart?
Yes.
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 Your motion to suspend?
Suspend Rule 14.
Second.
To approve.
Rule 14, the motions have been made to suspend Rule 14, which requires a second reading in the next meeting. So the motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor of suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Uh, any further discussion on this? Actually, accept a motion on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Now do these things in order. All right, roll call, please.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Klein? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
LeBart? Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Chair?
Yes.
Counsel Specter?
Yes.
Item number 36, also there's a request, as you heard in finance, for two readings. It's the $57,522 budgetary transfers for FY2014 to the E O Y.
To approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Was no, no.
It's a head scratch.
Okay. Sold to the counselors. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Klein? Sorry.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Chair?
Yes.
Counsel Specter?
Yes. Yes.
Suspend Rule 14.
Motion made to suspend rules?
Second.
Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor of waiving the second reading at the next meeting, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions?
Move second.
Second.
These are moved. Is there a second?
I seconded.
And there's a second by Counsel LeBart. Any further discussion?
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
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 Are you here?
It's okay.
I thought she said Klein, that's what I...
You just, you just... I can't believe she's not here.
That's what I thought.
She didn't yell out, "Carney." I'm sorry.
And by the way, all these requests for two readings, issue for the public's purposes is, is the reason we have to is we need to close out the budget before the next meeting. So that is why, and this is cleaning, cleaning up accounts and just taking care of business. We, we normally try to avoid doing two readings in one meeting. Next up is item 37. It's a $1,700 gift toward the installation of, of a rainbow crosswalk on Main Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Second. Any further discussion on this? Counsel Adams?
I just want to ask if this was a complete reimbursement of supplies?
I don't believe it was full, fully. Um, I know that the Board of Public Works had a meeting, uh, and the individuals who were doing the fundraising had pledged to raise that. That was the original estimate of how much it was going to be. I do think there are some additional costs that happened, but at that point, um, I believe the Board of Public Works' decision was just to go ahead and, um, and cover the additional costs. So, yeah.
Any other questions? Uh, okay, no further questions. Roll call, please.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Shear.
Yes.
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 Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Yes.
Suspend Rule fourteen. Second.
Motions made to suspend the rules for the second reading in next meeting and seconded. Uh, any discussion on the, on the suspension? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All accept a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Motions have been made and seconded for the second reading. Any further discussion? Uh, but by the way, I, I should say that the seventeen hun, this is to authorize the acceptance of the seventeen hundred dollars. Of course, that's, I wasn't laid out in the narrative here, but this is, the money's been donated. We are required to vote on whether we're going to accept the money or not. That's what this vote is for. Okay, roll call, please.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
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 Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Next up is eighty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to be appropriated for the demolition of a condemned structure at one hundred and seventy-one King Street.
Move approve. Seconded.
Just have been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item that we heard discussed in finance? Roll call, please.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shear.
Yes.
Counsel Specter.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yes.
Suspend Rule fourteen.
Motions have made to suspend rules.
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion on the suspension of rules?
Move to approve.
Wait, hang on a sec. Suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Second.
Motions have been made and seconded for second reading. Um, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shear.
Yes.
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 Counsel Klein.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yes.
Next up is two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars appropriated from the CPA budget for the Fitzgerald Lake invasive plant eradication project.
Move approve.
The motions have been made. Is there a second?
Seconded. Now we'll ask her.
Now there's discussion.
Yeah, I just have, uh, I'm not sure if it's the mayor or, uh, I see that Sarah Lavalley is here also, if she could answer a couple of questions and be recognized, or whether it would be the mayor to, anyone who might answer some questions on this. What's that?
All accept a motion to recognize Sarah Lavalley if.
If it's about the conservation.
Yes, it is on this.
Yeah, I guess I would defer.
Okay.
Is there a motion to recognize Sarah Lavalley?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hello, Sarah.
Hey, Sarah.
All right, so I'm here primarily as staff to the Community Preservation Committee, but I can also act as staff to the Conservation Commission.
Great.
Because I'm their agent as well.
Okay.
So the, the Community Preservation Committee voted in May to award the CPA funds to the Broadbrook Coalition for this project to remove the non-native invasive phragmites Australis from the Broadbrook, um, watershed. So this patch is located in the Broadbrook Gap parcel, which is a recent acquisition, so this area has never been treated before. It's an isolated area that's not easily accessible. Um, some, a few strands of this plant were identified last year with binoculars, and during this growing season, Broadbrook Coalition noticed that had grown to almost an acre, which phragmites is pretty notorious for doing. Um, so it's a dangerous plant to native ecosystems because they quickly form extensive monocultures that don't really have any value to the ecosystem of the United States. This is a plant from Asia, and our, our plants and animals don't, don't work with this plant at all. Um, so BBC is a valued partner of the Conservation Commission. They've had primary day-to-day management of Fitzgerald Lake Conservation Area for a number of years, so this is their application. Um, and the Community Preservation Committee agreed that this was a priority project to address this year.
Counsel. So you, we, I'm not sure you were hearing public comment, but somebody spoke to who knows about these things, about perhaps there being alternatives. You know, we had the same kind of discussion a while back of, um, when we were looking at the, the playing fields. And I'm just wondering if that discussion came up in either Cons, Conscom or CPA, whether there are viable other alternatives, and if there's, um, pressure right now to get this approved this evening, or if that discussion might continue. So I'm just kind of curious as to, and first of all, you know, I, I have a lot of respect for both the members of the, of the Conservation Commission and Broadbrook Coalition, um, and they, they do a lot of due diligence. So I'm hesitant to not vote for this tonight, but I just want to make sure that discussion came up, and I'd like to know what, what kind of things they said.
It did, yes. Um, so the Community Preservation Committee and the Conservation Commission as well aren't experts on herbicide use, but they do defer to the experts. Um, Broadbrook Coalition works with Politan Ecological Services, which is a, a really well-known and respected firm in the area, and they always use, um, hand-pulling and other methods, methods when possible. They indicated that that just wasn't an option in this case.
So, so it did, and just want to make clear, so they indicated they do, they did look at another option?
Yes. It can't be mown because it is, it's in the water and it can't be burned for the same reason.
Okay.
Um, Counsel O'Donnell, Counsel Shear, and then Counsel Adams.
Yeah, my, my concern is that last council meeting, Counselor Klein, is she here today, by the way? I've heard of her.
We keep referring to her.
Um, Counselor Klein raised, um, wherever she is, she, uh, she raised some, some good concerns, and, um, Counsel Shear just shared with me a, a letter that I, I think everyone got around five o'clock, um, from the contractor.
Which I sent out as soon as I received.
Right.
It's not your fault, uh, but it, so my, my thinking goes to what Counselor Specter was, was asking, is whether this has to be done tonight, because I certainly have, haven't read that letter. Uh, and I think Counselor Klein's, um, concerns are, are important to address. I don't know that they, they have been at this stage, um, unless you feel like you can summarize, if you've read the letter and can summarize it, you know, and...
Sure. Um, so again, he's the expert, so I'm just summarizing his words, but, um, so Politan Ecological has done a lot of phragmites management projects over the past nine years using different types of methods, all with good results. Uh, he indicated that using herbicides for the work shouldn't be taken lightly, and he absolutely wouldn't prescribe their use unless it was absolutely necessary, which he feels that it is in this case, and that he views the threat of phragmites within this particular marsh system as a greater threat than those posed by judicious herbicide use. Um, and while the active ingredient in this herbicide is glyphosate, which is the same active ingredient that's in Roundup, the surfactant that adheres to the plants is not the same as that that's in Roundup. This is actually approved, um, for aquatic uses. And it won't be sprayed. It will be individually applied to each plant, so there, there's no transfer by, uh, potential spraying methods and contamination that way.
Thank you.
Counsel Shear?
Um, as Counsel O'Donnell was mentioning, we, and you, you also mentioned, we, this, Counselor Klein had asked two weeks ago for more information, and it looks like they just got this information to you, and you forwarded it to us, but at five o'clock, and just by the fact that magically the Wi-Fi was working here, I, I saw that was here, but I, I don't think probably any of us have, have read it. Um, so I, I feel like I, I would be more comfortable if I had more time to review this and really see what they had said, and then see what other options there are.
Sure. Um, Broadbrook Coalition does want to get going on this as soon as possible because the threats of this going and other growing season are, are really.
Do you?
Pretty huge, but as long as it's done this year.
Do you know why it took him so long to get this information to you?
I believe he was out of town in the field.
Uh, Counsel Adams, then Counsel Carney, then Counsel Specter. No Counsel, can't talk.
Yeah, I, I'd want to echo as well that I haven't had a chance to read, uh, the memo, but, um, I also was wondering if you can address, uh, in public comment, it was stated that, um, that manufacturers do the research sometimes for these things, and that Denmark has banned glyphosate, if I'm saying it right. What's that?
Your clothes.
Clothes. Um, so, so it's kind of concerning to me that a country's actually banned that, the use of that chemical. Um, so could you respond to that?
That, I, I can't speak to. Um, I do know that generally there are a lot of herbicides and other chemicals as well that, that aren't accepted for use in other countries for a variety of reasons that are commonly used here.
So the, also another question, I was like, the contractor, um, it states that they believe it's safest. Do, do they have any, any evidence backing that statement up?
Uh, he did provide links to a, a number of studies.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, which you would be able to take.
It's in the memo.
Look at if you have more time.
Counsel Carney.
Um, I am prepared to support this tonight, just because I do believe that the threat, um, of the phragmites is, uh, really, um, a serious threat, and to have gone, two strains gone to an acre in less than a year is something that's of grave concern, um, to me. But I, I also defer to Broadbrook Coalition, who's been the steward for that, that area, that lake, in a volunteer basis, and a lot of work and a lot of responsibility, I think. And so I defer to them in this and to their request, and would respectfully ask if people would support that, just because I, I would hate to see one more strand, if ultimately we will, we will move forward in, um, eliminating this invasive species as soon as possible. I think we should just go forward and do it. I, I'm prepared to support it tonight, and I would be fearful of us delaying this too much further.
Uh, Counsel O'Donnell.
Um, just like I said, um, two weeks ago, I brought in some information about the plant in general, and when Wayne was here, so questioned him on some of it. I understand where Counselor Alyssa Klein had concerns about with the Roundup, but we really need to look at that area, and I agree with Counselor Carney, the Broadbrook Coalition, all the volunteers do a wonderful job there, and I think we need to look at the wildlife and the type of species that we have there, and that immediate action should be done on it.
It seems to me, if I understood Ms. Lavalley correctly, that as long as we vote on this thing by the end of the year, we should be safe. So I, I don't, I don't, I didn't say, I didn't get a sense of urgency, um, that others may, may, may seem there is. Um, again, do you think we're relatively safe if we vote on this in, in July tenth?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
I think that would.
And, and, and being that that's the case, I, I would like to look at the other information before I vote, and if it's tonight, I'm going to have to vote no. So my preference would be a postponement. Thank you.
Counsel Shear?
Um, there's, despite it being applied individually, there's concerns that were, that were raised at public comment that, that the application would, since it's in the water, this particular herbicide spreads in water fairly easily. Do you know anything?
So the, the herbicide does eventually break down into not in any way harmful organic material, and a lot of that is determined by the, the type of surfactant, or the, basically the, the sticky soap that's used to make it stick to the plant. Um, and because this is approved for aquatic uses, then it doesn't transfer as readily as Roundup does.
The, the, the things that I would like to know going forward is, glycerphate, of course, as you said, does break down quickly, doesn't have a very excellent. Surfactants are, of course, are always the biggest concern, and actually, they're the most pernicious in these things. Um, this is topical application as opposed to spraying. And you're right, the surfactant, actually, the purpose is to, it's a soapy, um, substance, basically to break down the oils on the plant so that the glycerphate can be introduced into the plant. But I need to know, the surfactant thing is of particular concern, and, um, you know, we heard one, um, one expression of application being spraying, which is, that's vastly different than painting. Uh, I want to make sure that we're, that's, point of fact, what's happening. I know that rodeo has a different surfactant than, than Roundup. The fact is, is it may not be any more or less pernicious. So that's, that's a particular concern, and, and surfactants last a lot longer. I want to introduce them to the water system that they, they don't break down as readily as the glycerphate. So all those things, those are clearly questions that we need to know going forward, and, um, and, you know, whatever, would, and, and I have an op, maybe this is explained in these letters, which I didn't even know I got, so now I just saw the letter. So we'll have a chance to bone up on our biochemistry and, and its impacts on, on the environment. And all that said, I, I concur with Counsel Carney, that I know that people who are, um, deeply dedicated to the least harmful mitigation for property that they cherish, uh, that is their charge and that is their ethos, and I, I give that a lot of credence. But at the same time, I'd feel a lot more comfortable knowing the science better. I don't claim to be, I know there are other, we've had counselors in the past who claim great expertise in this area, and I will not make that claim. So, but the fact is, we do have the capacity to learn and understand. So if, if that's possible, I, it sounds like the preference here would be to postpone this vote on this issue. Now, the only other question I would have is, it would be if Susan Wright, the mayor, is there, it, does this gum up the works for you guys as far as, uh, sort of, having these funds, uh, not quite make the budget deadline?
While they're thinking, point of order on this?
Yeah.
Is it possible to prove the funds with a stipulation that, without directing it specifically to, uh, what's being used?
I think it's a little trickier than it have to be at this point.
These are not, they're, once, these are funds that don't, they're not going to go away after June.
Exactly. Okay, good. Thank you. So that's, um, so should it be, should a determination be made by Jul, the July tenth meeting, then it's, it's entirely possible to do two readings then, and you'll know one way to other, um, July tenth on this issue.
So move to postpone till July tenth.
Second. motions have been made and seconded to postpone till July tenth. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, nay here. Counsel Carney, any abstentions? Okay. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
And I know we'll be seeing you in a bit. It's, um... The next up is the financial order of two thousand four hundred dollars to purchase or otherwise acquire for conservation land on Dyke Road, and this is also a request for.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motions have been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this?
Second reading.
It is second reading.
I'm sorry, it is second reading. It's not a request, two readings.
Yeah.
This is, motions made on second reading and seconded. Any further discussion on this?
I would like four readings, just because I really support.
Any other thoughts on that besides Counsel O'Donnell's sane request? Roll call, please.
Counsel Shear.
Yes.
Counsel Specter.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Yes.
I wasn't going to say.
Trying to throw my voice.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Uh, the motion passes in second reading. Uh, next up is item forty-one, which is the donation of land off Stone Ridge Drive. This is a second.
Move to approve.
So may is a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, I will ask the secretary to call the roll.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel White.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel, I hope you're not debating business that is intended.
No.
Just to make sure. Get a timeout. Okay, get a timeout. All right, abrupt orders and ordinances. Um, item number one is, uh, comes with no recommendation. Uh, this is to amend charter rules to the Finance Committee, number eleven order, this is Counsel Adams.
I'm withdrawing this because I'm going to resubmit it at a later point, and the reason why is I realized yesterday that if this is going to do what I intended to do, it needs a change to another rule. So I'm going to resubmit it, I'll resubmit it again after I redraft the rule. It's rule number twenty-nine that needs to be amended in order to get this to do what I hope it does.
So the, the order's been, the sponsor's removed the order from the agenda. So, next up, item number two, this is to amend, uh, three twelve dash one oh two, Schedule One, Parking Prohibitive at All Times on Maple Street. This comes with a positive recommendation from Transportation and Parking Commission on May twentieth, twenty fourteen. Positive
Commission on May 20, 2014. Positive recommendation from ordinances.
Can, can we take actually two, three, and four together?
Two, three, four, which all correspond to the same, address the same thing.
Yep. I'll, I'll second that to move as a group.
Those as a group. The sec, the second item is limited time parking on Maple Street. And the next one is on-street and off-street handicap parking spaces on Maple Street. All coming with the same recommendations from both ordinance and Transportation.
So moved.
Seconded.
You wanna speak to this, Counselor O'Donnell?
Sure. I would defer to Counselor LeBarge if she wants to explain it, but it adds a handicap parking space, as Ms. Shaughnessy explained during public comment. And Transportation and Parking Commission gave it a, gave these ordinances to do that a positive recommendation.
Yes. Counselor, I, I am Pat Shaughnessy and Alex did a site visit on the concerns of many residents that we've had for the past two years of having the handicap parking being placed up on Maple Street. And we spent a lengthy time at that site. And people are gonna be very, very happy about this because we only have one handicap parking up on Main Street in Florence, but it's on the side of the Florence Savings Bank. That's the only one that we have.
Any further discussion on these three items? Hit it.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Adams? Yes.
Counselor Scher?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
The motion passes first reading. It'll next be voted on, on July 10th. So, that's one, looking at that next. Running out of things to say. Next up, do you, this is on, this is also out of TPC. And this is to amend 312, Chapter 312-117, Schedule 14, On-Street and Off-Street Handicap Parking Spaces on Henshaw Avenue. Again, with a positive recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, also a positive recommendation from ordinance. Counselor O'Donnell?
I, I again would defer to, to Counselor Specter, who proposed this, but this is a handicap parking space that is no longer needed. And so the Transportation Parking Commission gave a positive recommendation to removing that handicap parking space. But you may wish to elaborate.
I will. Well said.
Okay.
Any other discussion? This is establishing more handicap spaces on Henshaw.
It's removing.
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 Yep.
That is no longer.
Needed.
No longer necessary. I do recall the discussion, I'm sorry. Any further discussion?
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
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 Next up is to amend Chapter 312-102, Schedule 1, Parking Prohibited at All Time on Massa Soiet Street. This comes with a positive recommendation from TPC and a positive recommendation from ordinance.
Yeah, the next two, I, I would like to refer to Counselor Specter to explain the rationale.
Okay. I'll need a motion, put it on the floor.
Oh, sorry. I so moved.
Second.
Okay. Counselor Specter, you wanna improve your eloquence from the last time?
Any announcement?
High bar.
Number six, the Massa Soiet Street, Parking Prohibited at All Times. There're gonna be, there may be some other ordinances coming forward. The reason for this is there, there are a number of changes that are now happening around the Y, some of which have to do with some long-term problems around there that, that need, needed to be addressed. And some of those have to do with the fact that the whole, the Y parking situation is changing somewhat. This particular one was, is a, a signage that actually I think should have been there already, down from the corner for visibility. And it's for safety issues that we're asking this to put in place.
Any other questions about this? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scher?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Yes. That passes in first reading and will be voted again on July 10th. Item, ordinance number seven here is to amend Chapter 312-117, Schedule 14, sorry, Schedule 16, On-Street and Off-Street Handicap Parking Spaces. This is on Prospect Street, also with a positive recommendation from TPC and ordinance. Motion? Any further discussion, Counselor O'Donnell?
It's actually, although the agenda says handicap parking spaces, we have the ordinance as parking prohibited at all times. And that is actually what is being changed.
It's the same.
Yes, that is correct.
What's, what's requested here is Chapter 312-117, which is the same thing as, which is handicap parking spaces.
On the actual ordinance, it says parking prohibited at all times under the.
Okay.
312-102.
Yep.
So the agenda may have stated it wrong.
I believe so, yes.
Uh.
Number six?
Yeah, if we're looking at the actual, yeah, what came through as the recommendation, the ordinance, it's, the ordinance is written correctly.
Okay. Yeah, this is, this is, the agenda's wrong. It's 312-102, of that code. I have a concern then, because the posted agenda actually stipulated one thing, anyone who might have an objection.
It's also, isn't it twice, let me look at the agenda, because I think it's, the agenda has 312-102 unless that's the one we just passed. Is it 312-102?
Massa Soiet. Massa Soiet.
Right.
This is, this is actually now.
Prospect.
312-117, on Prospect.
I see. So then the, the.
What I would, we, I would be, I think it would be fine to postpone this to the next meeting if, I'll request two readings at the next meeting.
I understand.
Do that. Okay.
I mean, and the concern here is that, as I said, we publish the agenda. Anyone who's prepared to object to this, who might object.
Just trying to, this, the parking issue around the Y is, they're, they're working on the parking now. So just if we could move this ahead, that would be fine.
You've been annealed in the tortures, in the fires of hell, and I understand, you get credit for that. And they'll just toast you just a little bit.
Yeah.
Ask Counselor Murphy on middles.
Third council session, it's coming back.
Okay. So this brings us up to amend Chapter 312-75. This is the compression release engine brake use operation of heavy commercial vehicles. Comes with a positive recommendation from TPC and a positive recommendation from ordinance. Your motion?
Motion, move to approve?
Second. Discussion.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
I'm gonna support this 100%. I think Counselor Dwight, if you can recall, and especially Counselor Adams, who spent a lengthy time on Route 66 of the problems we were having with the engine brakes problems and the noise. And that ordinance was put in place by, I think, the mayor, I, and Jesse. And Counselor President, is there some way that you could check out, that's my request. I see all these streets that are being involved. I did talk with Ned Huntley about three months ago in regards to complaints of having that problem again over by Glendale Road, which was the big problem of the engine braking again. And he said that the state had stated, because it was understood that signage eventually would be placed throughout the city in certain areas. And we assumed Route 66 would have the signage for prohibiting engine braking. And that said that, the state said that they would not allow the signs to be placed on state property. Could you check that out? Because all these streets apparently are gonna have these signs, but it was understood with our previous ordinance.
That's of course presuming it passes.
Yep.
So, Counselor Murphy, did you have?
Well, interestingly enough, this is placed in 312-75, where it talks about compression braking, but it really doesn't change compression braking. It, it cha, it prohibits heavy vehicles on these streets and asks for signage, but it doesn't say anything about compression braking really. So it, it, you know, and I'd be happy to read it, but it talks about prohibiting heavy vehicles in the directions on the streets listed.
I agree.
And signs it, but it really doesn't change anything to do with the use of compression brakes.
That's.
Even though it's in that section.
Counselor O'Donnell, you wanna address that?
Sure, yeah. That, that, Counselor, you're correct about that. This ordinance does two things. One, there, there's a current listing, listing of streets under Section B, which are prohibited for heavy commercial trucks to travel. And we're not adding any new streets. We're doing two things. One, I, I view this as kind of closing a loophole in those prohibitions. Right now, there are at least two official escape routes or detours that I know of, Lincoln Avenue and Phillips for trucks that come off the highway and legitimately, honestly, make a mistake in which direction they, they travel. They need to avoid striking the bridge. This would simply say that it's, of course, okay to do that, to avoid hitting the bridge, but you can't keep doing it over and over again because it's easier than going up Damon Road.
Exactly.
Which residents suspect happens from time to time, although I don't have exact data on those numbers because we don't track that. And secondly, it does establish signage on all those listed streets. There was discussion in the Transportation Parking Commission that if we added the $300 fine, which is the maximum under state law, we can, we can, we can fine someone for violating this law, that it would be more of a deterrent than it is now. And finally, it says, let's actually make sure we have signs. Once, one street where there is no sign for heavy commercial vehicles is Parsons Street, which of course is home to Bridge Street School. We definitely wanna make sure that trucks do not use that as, as, as an escape route.
Can, can I ask you about the compression brake?
Yeah.
Question, though. This is, this is being described as compression brake release, which is vastly different. I mean, obviously, trucks can't, if they're not allowed to travel on that road, they're not allowed, you know, theoretically not allowed to use any brakes, right?
They're not just beyond there anyway.
Well, I almost said knee.
But the fact, I'm not sure how compression release engine brakes became part of this.
I believe, so, you know, Section 312-75 is simply entitled compression release engine brake use. I believe that, that part is in Section A. And I just, I started in, in Section B. If I were to summarize Section A, it says that those compression release brakes or Jake brakes.
Right.
As we professional truckers call them, are discouraged, but they're not prohibited because of safety. They, they have safety applications.
Those are my objections. I, my objections are on, because those are actually, those are safety devices.
Exactly.
Do create loud noise. And I, but they are another means by which a truck moving at speed can reduce speed. They're loud. Some drivers tend to use them more often than not because that's, for whatever reason.
Exactly.
But I have a real problem when we start to limit safety processes, when we're actually trying to eliminate or reduce truck traffic on particular roads.
Right. And in fact, that would remain unchanged.
Yeah, just as a clarification, Counselor O'Donnell's amendment does nothing around the already existing legislation around the compression brakes, the Jake brakes. That was four years ago, or was it some time ago, when the original proposed ordinance would have limited the use of Jake brakes far, far more than what was presently in the, in fact, I think there's the whole acknowledgement that they are a safety mechanism. And we heard from many, many truckers and people in that business. And that was kind of the compromise legislation at the time. So the amendment, though, offered tonight has nothing to, it just happens a coincidence that it's in that.
It's in the same.
And I've had, I had conversations with a couple of folks who thought, when they saw this, that it had to do with the compression brakes. And it doesn't really, although it does deal with the fact that if there are people using them presently on, the question that I was, people using them on Jackson Street, for example, what I told them was, if you read it, that they shouldn't be on, they shouldn't be on Jackson Street in the first place.
So we're establishing truck restrictions, and it just happens to be under the chapter of compression brakes?
Because that's where, the, the heavy industrial use, that place was there already. And then we, in order for them to put in a place for the compression brakes back four years ago, they put it in that section.
But then, we are de facto, though, restricting compression brake use on these restricted roads.
They're already, they're, those vehicles are already prohibited from being on those roads in the first place.
I understand that. But should they find themselves on that road, we're also adding to the fact that they will not be allowed to use Jake brakes.
They're gonna get a fine if they do, that's all.
That's, that's a prohibition.
I wish I had, I wish I had Section A, which I believe is the compression brake section in front of me, which I don't. But, thank you. But I do not believe there is any kind of prohibition or fine attached to use of compression brakes anywhere in the city.
No, there isn't.
That's my understanding. And unlike.
I recall four years ago, I don't think there was.
Unlike the Jake brakes themselves, this ordinance is silent on that subject.
It doesn't change, it doesn't change the status quo.
It does not change.
Yeah. As Counselor Casey so eloquently put it, they're better than squashing somebody. Yeah. Believe it or not, I actually was a truck driver and used Jake brakes. And they are actually a critical safety feature in our vehicle. And if we had suddenly by accident, I, I understand, we don't want them on those roads. But at the same time, I don't want them, if they're on Jackson Street is a perfect example. If they need every braking apparatus possible to stop in order not to hit somebody, particularly a kid going to school, that, I'm not inclined.
They're already allowed by, that's why I wanna read the ordinance, if I can pull it up. In fact, if they get a ticket, if they get a fine, it's for being on the road in the first place, not for using the brakes.
Exactly.
They won't get fined for using the brakes, they get fined for being on the road.
Then my suggestion would to be amend the title of the chapter at some point.
I think so too.
I think it is, it is, does not transmit to people interested in trying to find out about this, the proper.
That's true.
The proper disposition of this ordinance.
Do you really wanna pull those up? I can, I just have to find it.
If you wanted to.
Here it is.
Again, the number 10.
312-75, or as Counselor Specter suggested, you could do it at second reading. Why don't we consider it second reading so we can, we don't jerry-rig something crazy? Yeah, that's fine. Okay. We'll, we'll work on that for, and for second reading.
Sure.
It sounds like a good recommendation. Does Counselor Adams?
I have it here. I had a different question, but I don't wanna take us on a route we don't wanna go.
Yeah, I think, I, I think some clarity is important here, particularly if you're gonna fine someone $300, they better be clear on what they're getting fined for. And so we're clear on that. So in first reading, despite the, the introductory title, this is a, this is a limitation associated with a fine for trucks operating on the listed roads. And if you'd like, I can read the roads.
Sure.
Day Avenue from Bridge Street, Elizabeth Street from Bridge Street, Jackson Street from Bridge Road. Make the distinction for people who are, they're two different roads, just so everyone's clear. Lincoln Avenue southeasterly direction from Bridge Street, North Street from Market Street, North Street southwesterly direction Lincoln Avenue, Orchard Street, Bridge Street, Parsons Street from Bridge Street, and Prospect Avenue from Bridge Road.
Move the question.
And just, just to clarify, those are, of course, in the law currently.
Right.
Yep.
Any further discussion on this? In first reading, everyone prepare for a vote?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scher?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me. We're getting down to it. This is item number nine. This is to amend Chapter 350, Section 2.1, Affordable Units. And the recommendation from ordinance was affirmative. Is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, this is.
Oh, yes.
It looks like it comes with a recommendation from you guys.
It comes with a recommendation for referral.
For referral.
This is a referral.
I would move we refer it to economic development.
Got it.
I would second that.
The motion is to move this to EDLO. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor of referral, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? And, and, oh, look, item number 10. You may have seen this before. To amend Chapter 350, that's to extend the moratorium through December 31st, 2014. The moratorium, of course, on the seventh item of zoning, I mean, of seven units or more. And we, this is a process issue, just so everyone's clear. It now has a positive recommendation from ordinance. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Any further discussion on this item? Counselor Murphy, you wanna talk about the dazzling meeting you had about this?
Oh, just, just, just quickly, Planning Board, and, or, Planning Board is sort of taking its time to perfect these seven or more units issue that primarily affects, or has great interest in Ward 3 down off Hockenham Road. And the moratorium's gonna run out the end of the month. It's gonna take another month or two to perfect it. So we don't want the moratorium to run out before the public hearing is closed and action is taken to change it. So we're just extending the moratorium. I believe it's extended through the end of the year, though we have, we're real comfortable with the fact that it probably will be settled by September, and then people can take advantage of that zoning down there. And it will be the way people want it to be. So this just extends it till the end of the year, probably not all to be used.
Uh, thank you. Any further discussion on this? A moratorium that won't go away.
Any of them.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scher?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge? Yes.
Yes.
Suspend Rule 14.
There's a motion to suspend rules.
Second.
Seconded. Any debate on the suspension rule? Counselor Adams? All those in favor of suspended rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Any abstentions? Except for motion, second reading. I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.